Welcome, everybody, to tonight's Lake County Candidate Forum for Lake County Commission. I'm Eric Kortnis, Executive Director of the Greater Madison Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'll be moderating tonight's forum. A few thank yous to get us started. Thank you to Dakota State University for once again allowing us to use this facility for our forums. Thank you to the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee for helping to put on the event. Also, thank you to the Chamber staff, Courtney and Danielle. They're monitoring the Facebook Live comments, and if we have any questions turned in through Facebook Live, they'll get those to me. Speaking of Facebook Live, thank you for those joining us on Facebook and here in the crowd. And lastly, but definitely not least, thank you to the county commission candidates for your willingness to serve our area. Now on to the format for tonight's forum. There are three candidates running for the two seats on the county commission, two incumbents, which are Kelly Wallman and Aaron Johnson, and one new candidate, Corey Johnkey. Candidates will be given two minutes to introduce themselves, explain their qualifications, and summarize what issues are important to them. Questions asked of the candidates will be submitted from the audience during the forum on the note cards, and we have Cotton Cook here with some clipboards and pens. If you have a question for a candidate, you can get his attention and jot your question down, and he'll get it over to me. We also have some questions that were submitted ahead of time, and then, like I mentioned before, they can be submitted via Facebook Live. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer the question, and in conclusion, each candidate will be given one minute for their final comments and closing remarks. And we'll rotate who answers first for each question. For the introductions, the candidates will begin in alphabetical order by last name, which I had to go a long ways down the line here for last names to figure out who went first. Okay, let's get started. Corey Johnkey, in two minutes, please tell us about yourself and what personal qualities and experience you have that make you a good candidate for Lake County Commission.
Well, thank you, Eric, and it'll be kind of nice to let have this on Facebook and kind of explain things to everybody. Graduated from Madison High School, lived here all my life, family's been here all my life, farm south of Madison in the Orland area. My wife, who's over here on my right, supporting me tonight, and our three boys. Graduated from Madison, attended college at SDSU, worked for local businesses in town such as Domestic Seed &amp; Supply, which is now Mustang Seeds, moved on to Farmer's Ag Center in Madison, and been self-employed since 2012. Main goal for running for county commission would be to obviously serve the county, tackle some problems that I kind of see that are not getting resolved. No fault of anybody, but I think my input and opinion could be very, very valuable to this county, and I would just thank you for letting me be a part of this, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Corey. Aaron, tell us about yourself and what personal qualities and experience you have that make you a good candidate.
Sure. I'm Aaron Johnson. I've been your county commissioner for the last six years. First off, born and raised in Lake County, and I also farm south of Madison, here right next to Corey's place. My wife and three kids are here supporting me as well. And I guess getting into some of the things that are important to me as a commissioner, one of the main responsibilities that we have is controlling the funding that comes into Lake County and doing our best to facilitate where those monies go into each departments and any requests that come forth to the county commissioners. And also, my main aspect would be treating our employees fair and equitable, along with Lake County residences and also its resources. So, those are things that I kind of stand for as a county commissioner. That would be it.
Thank you. Kelly, we'll move over to you. A little bit about yourself and what personal qualities and experience you have that make you a good candidate.
Hi, I'm Kelly Wallman, in case you don't know me. I'm a long, lifetime resident of Madison, South Dakota. I've been a public servant for most of my life, either through the volunteering, working, being involved in things in the community. I have my husband here of 37 years, who's here to support me, my son and his wife. My husband's a retired police officer from the city of Madison. My son is a police officer here from the city of Madison, and his wife works at the DSU Foundation, and they own Wallman Productions together. Our daughter lives in Sioux Falls. She is a correctionals officer for the Sheriff's Department in Minnehaha County. I -- in my 12 years being a commissioner, I have seen a lot of things. I've been part of a lot of things. It's been my pleasure to serve for the county all these years, and I wish to continue to serve for more years. This is the hardest part for me to sit up and talk about myself. It is a venture that all five commissioners, when we are sitting at the seat, that we do the best that we can for the county and our employees and our elected, other elected officials. And that's easy to say. It's hard to come up with all the things that we have done or accomplished on our own, which doesn't happen very often. I came into this race at the beginning without an agenda, and I still remain without a personal agenda of any sorts. There's plenty of things that happen that we get into that we can help the public with.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into our questions, and the first one, we'll start with Aaron, and we'll work down the line. First question, what, if anything, would you like to see done so that our county roads can be improved?
That's always a question we get a lot. That's probably the number-one thing, and probably the number-one department that has the biggest funding issues with it, and that, in essence, is the problem in a nutshell, is the lack of funding. It gets frustrating trying to deal with projects that require dollars, and we're working with pennies. So, if and when funding becomes available through any option that we see fit, there's going to be a clear plan of attack with the roads and the systems involved with everything there. So, it's a difficult problem that we're always dealing with every year, and the problem is not getting any better. So, we're at a point now where something needs to change quickly, and it's just, otherwise, the path that we're on now is not looking good for us.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Same question, what, if anything, would you like to see done so that our county roads can be improved?
Thank you for not standing up this time. You did. I would encourage our legislators for new revenue sources, excuse me. We've had several disasters, presidential disasters, in our area in the last five years or more. It has knocked us down as far as culverts, bridges, roads. It hasn't helped any. It's been quite a feat there. But eventually, if things don't change, we might have to think about an opt-out or a local tax levy. We did try a local tax levy once, and it was, it went up for a referendum vote, and it failed. We have 220 miles of paved roads, we have 80 miles of gravel roads, 677 culverts, and 52 bridges. And it's, and we maintain them all, we help with the construction, remove snow, ice, mowing, patching. There's quite a few things that go on with the road department, and it, it's easy to jump at the roads, per se, but there's so much more to it in the end.
Corey, over to you. What, if anything, would you like to see done so that our county roads can be improved?
Obviously, I drive on many of the county roads in this county, from traveling back and forth through town, renting ground on various parts of the county, renting pasture, running cattle up in the northeast part of the county. Like I said, working for local co-op, I've traveled almost every road in this county, and they are in bad shape. And obviously, the budgeting issue and funds is the main thing, and it is a time where we need to get creative. Little things, just from a citizen's standpoint, of reading jobs that have been done by Johnson Brothers on fixing a culvert in this town, when our county workers and our county equipment fleet is fully capable of doing those sorts of things. Maybe little details, little things like that, that we need to pay attention to, and maybe look at other ways of maybe, do we not need this piece of equipment, and maybe looking at outsourcing it. Having that $300,000 piece of equipment in our yard doesn't do any good if we're not going to use it and we're going to pay somebody else to do it. Little things like that, I think, need to be paid attention to a little more. Like I said, just ways we need to get a little bit more creative. Obviously, we've got to get used to paying more for things. I mean, we used to be able to put a gallon of gas in our car for $1.50. We don't do that anymore. I'd imagine if it takes $1,000 to fix a certain amount of feet of a road, it probably costs $3,000 nowadays. So, it's a time to get creative and look into other problems or other solutions that might help the overall budget for the county as well.
Thank you. We'll move over to Kelly for this question to start us off. Another kind of budget question, I was very disappointed to see some of the budget cuts recently, most notably, the cutting of the ambulance services budget. If elected, is there anything you would concentrate on so that those budget cuts don't continue to happen?
Budget cuts, a lot of times, we will look at whether we are legislatively authorized or legislatively, if we have required or authorized statutorily. So, when we look at our budget, we take care of the county as we have from the get-go. And then, when we go to allocating money or any extra funds to these statutorily authorized places, then we have to make sure that we are, first of all, taking care of our own for the county, since there are so many mandates that are brought here by the legislative audit. There's a booklet out there that tells exactly what we are required to by law, no matter what kind of funds that we have as a county. And one of those things that got cut were the authorized pieces of money that we were allocating. And it's not that we do not support these things that we have, it's what we have to do. We have to stay on track for the money. We do not get sales tax revenue like cities do or things like that. We are strictly, mainly for property taxes is what our income comes from.
Corey, over to you. Question again, I was very disappointed to see some of the budget cuts recently, most notably, the cutting of the ambulance services budget. If elected, is there anything you would concentrate on so that those budget cuts don't continue to happen?
Obviously, you know, everybody understands and experiences budget cuts in their own households. It happens in my household various times of the year. It's sad to see some things go, but then again, certain things are a necessity, and we do have to delegate where we are going to put those budget cuts in, and it is a very tough decision. I think the ambulance service is one thing that probably should not be touched in terms of just medical, personal safety for everybody that lives in this county, and I think we would all agree to that, that anything can happen to any one person at any given time, and we desperately need that service. Obviously, as Kelly says, we do need to stay in budget, we need to work with money. Obviously, we need to come up with a solution, so we do not need to do those budget cuts. Nobody likes increases in anything. I don't as well, but unfortunately, it just happens to be a fact of life.
Aaron, over to you. Talking about the recent ambulance services budget cut, and if elected, is there anything you would concentrate on so that those budget cuts don't continue to happen?
Yeah, that's a frustrating question as well. It is frustrating to cut people, especially looking at the ambulance services. You know, when am I going to need an ambulance? I don't know, but I'm probably going to need something. Let's hope it doesn't happen. But to turn down these outside entities is difficult. So, that's the frustrating part about everything, when you have little money to work with. Like Kelly said, we're statutorily authorized to fund necessary departments, and we're also authorized to give money to outside entities. And it's not getting any better, as I alluded to in the first question, so funding is always an issue with us. Well, Kelly would know better than I would, too, that last 12 years. I don't know if there's ever been a budget that was completely okayed without a cut. So, there's always going to be cuts of some nature, some sort. So, with that being said, so, one of the biggest things that I think would really help us out at the county commission level is educating the public on how little money we actually do have. Even though you write a check to the Lake County Treasurer for your property taxes, you've got to realize that there's a small amount that actually stays in the county. 60% to 65% goes to the schools, then there's your water districts, which is a very small percentage, towns and townships, and what's left over is what the county gets. And we're supposed to operate and fund 220 miles of asphalt, what, 70 miles of gravel off of that? We've got a sheriff's department with a jail, and we've got a number of 65 employees when we're fully staffed, so it takes a lot of money to run this. Otherwise, our services are going to suffer greatly from all of this. So, it just boils down to a funding issue.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Corey on this one. With the proposed Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline coming through a portion of Lake County, an estimated to contribute around $1 million in property taxes to the county, are you in favor or against the pipeline?
That's been a very tough question for me. Obviously, the pipeline is going to run very close to my residence, weighed out the pros and cons, and I don't know if I'm so much against the pipeline in general, as more as I am for the people behind the project and kind of what they stand for in terms of, you know, Summit Carbon has an engineering department based out of South Korea that has had multiple fines based upon them from our U.S. government, and they're behind this deal. I don't necessarily believe in putting something in the ground that all of our plants require to grow. What people want to forget is that, all they want to talk about is the carbon that is put in the air by the ethanol plants. Nobody wants to talk about all the carbon that an acre of my corn or soybeans pulls out of the air. That is one topic that gets forget. I have trouble. I go back and forth. I'd love to have the property tax revenue for this county. Who wouldn't? They talk a big game. I would sure like to see a little bit more into that, but basically, at the end of the day, like I said, I do not stand behind the technology or the purpose of this project. I mean, Summit Carbon is doing this for tax credits, government tax credits, $450 to $600 million worth of tax credits. That's tax money that will take away from schools, just our general U.S. fund, and I just have a hard time wrapping my head around the whole thing, doing the pros and cons. Like I said, I'm in favor of generating money for the county. Don't ever want to turn that away, but I feel this might be an instance where we might be able to let this thing go aside. There's been multiple counties in the state already passing toxic waste ordinances underground in their county and kind of putting a stop to eminent domain on certain types of things, and I guess I'm probably in favor for that. I'm worried that there's nothing we can do, that this is bigger than us and it will get pushed through, but I guess maybe we just make it a little tougher on them.
Aaron, over to you. Talking about Summit Carbon Solutions, with the pipeline coming through a portion of Lake County, estimated for around $1 million in property taxes, are you in favor or against the pipeline?
I've been waiting for this question, because I can't be any more clear that I'm so adamantly opposed to any type of hazardous liquid carbon pipeline running through any part of the United States or in the world. Just to touch on the one point that you brought up, supposedly $1 million in property taxes, so this is just one small aspect of why I'm opposed to any of these pipelines. So, that projection came from Ernest and Young. It's an accounting firm in New York, and Ernest and Young projected those numbers based on what was provided to them by Summit Engineering or Summit Carbon Solutions, whatever you want to call them. And so, they were already working with skewed numbers. And then, to add to that, Ernest and Young had to pay $100 million fine to the U.S. government this year alone, because of all things, they were caught cheating on their ethics, on their ethics standards. So, they're not even hiring reputable auditors. So, that there alone just completely blows the $1 million projections out of the water. Todd Bailey, from the South Dakota Department of Revenue, told me, his quote was, "Take caution when dealing with summit numbers. They are high projections. Every one of us should know exactly where every penny is coming from with Summit Carbon Solutions when they say they have these projections, and they should be able to back them up 100 percent." I don't think they're going to be able to do that. The pipeline funding, it's all through federal tax money, as Corey said. The 45-Q federal tax credit savings is money that's already coming from the taxpayers, and supposedly, a $1 million of that is coming back to the Lake County. You're already getting taxed. You're getting taxed again on this. And then, to, I could keep going on and on. The cleanup costs, what's it going to cost to clean up a lake? If this thing, they want to run it underneath round lake. If this thing leaks, you have carbonic acid. How good is that for our recreation? How good is that for our residences? How good is that for the life of our individuals? As I said earlier, my thing is the equitable treatment of Lake County residents and its resources. So, what good is $1 million in property taxes if there's a death? What if it's your house? It runs really close to my place, just like it does Corey's place. How good is that going to treat us if we've got smooth roads? So, these are the types of developments that I will not support in Lake County. They're going to cost us dearly in the end. The safety issue alone is just not worth anything. As I alluded to earlier, yeah, we're dealing with budget issues, but this is really going to cost us if this gets into our county.
Kelly, over to you to finish this one up. Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline is coming through a portion of Lake County. Are you in favor or against the pipeline?
It is not whether I am in favor or against the pipeline. I took an oath and have the responsibility to the taxpayers to do the right thing. Lake County intervened and obtained party status. It gives us protection for us, for appealing rights when the time comes. As a commissioner, I need to be objective, based on the merits of the facts brought to us as a board, not my personal feelings, not what you hear off the streets, the internet, my neighbor, grocery store. We sit as a quasi-judicial board, a fair and impartial board, just the same as a judge. If we don't work as a quasi-judicial board, it jeopardizes both the people that are for and against.
Thank you. We'll move on to our fourth question, and I believe we're at Aaron starting off. What challenges do you see for the county in terms of the new housing developments that are going up around Lake Madison, and how do you see those challenges being worked through?
Lake Madison is a great place to live. I mean, we've got a lot going for us in Lake County with all of our lakes and resources. So, it is a tough thing to deal with. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a developer. I try to do my best, again, to protect the people of Lake County and do it responsibly. I like the process that we have in place already. We have multiple hearings to address issues and try to fix these things for the concerned citizens. These new developments are going to be asking more services of Lake County, and so it's on the county to provide those things, even though funding is limited. And so, there may be a point in the future where we may need to impose charges on these new developments to help us out with making sure that we're still providing the services necessary for everybody now and into the future as we grow, and it's growing. I like how things are looking out there. Of course, there are going to be issues, whether it be anything from dust to bike trails to traffic. Overcrowding during the Fourth of July always concerns me if there's ever an accident out there. We're trying to work through all of those things and do the best we can and still treat everybody fair and equal.
Kelly, over to you. What challenges do you see for the county in terms of the new housing developments that are going up around Lake Madison, and how do you see those challenges being worked through?
I'm not quite sure the challenges that they are referring to in this question. As long as we, as these housing developments meet the zoning requirements, it's pretty much out of our hands. Generally, developments take years to construct, and I can see that they could have infrastructure challenges with private roads, et cetera. There are things that homeowners can do to regulate what is going on in their neighborhoods. They can do covenants, homeowners' associations, and road districts, just to name a few.
Corey, over to you. What challenges do you see for the county in terms of the new housing developments that are going up around Lake Madison, and how do you see those challenges being worked through?
As Kelly said, I guess I don't know specifically challenges. I would just assume in terms of traffic, maintenance, and things of that nature, that there's things we can do for maybe putting in, for new development in terms of possibly, you know, new developed land, on building permit costs, availability to hook up to water, and certainly, things like that, where I think could be an opportunity to generate a few more dollars to handle that workload and work through it as we go, just come up with multiple ideas. I think it's never a bad thing to encourage development and bring people to the community, because we all contribute. There's a reason why my family is here, and it's a great place to live, and I would never want to turn anything away in terms of development and people. And if there was a specific question to this, I would be more than happy to answer that.
Thank you. We'll move to one of the questions that we've We'll move to one of the questions that we've received on Facebook Live. And Kelly, you're up first with this one. How will you help the process of getting a new jail facility built for Lake County?
I was one of those that was on that committee for several years, three, four years it was. We lost the battle by 40 votes, I believe. I would love to go at it again. I would love to see it through fruition because things have changed. The way that we, a lot of people say, well, the reason why you, or why would you want to make a bigger, better facility for the inmates? It's not necessarily for the inmates. It's for litigation purposes, for your people that work there. Sight, one person that's in for this cannot be next to another person that did something We have done female and male prisoners, inmates. I would definitely like to pursue that again, just for the liability reasons. Our building is old. The 911 communication should not be where it's at right now either. It would open up other avenues for people to use our facility.
Thank you. Over to Corey. How will you help the process of getting a new jail facility built for Lake County?
I understand the concerns and things about having a new jail and taking care of problems that arise in our existing jail. But at this point in time, I have no idea why we would want to build a new jail when we can't fund our ambulance services. Back when this thing went through, it seemed like to me that minor in Moody County might benefit to that jail system more than Lake County would. I mean, I would love to have somebody else pay for something that I could use and not have to, you know, contribute directly. That was one of my problems with it the first time. Not saying we don't need a new jail, not saying we shouldn't do it in the future. Absolutely, I'm 100% for it. But I believe there are other things at hand that need to be taken care of first.
And over to Aaron. How will you help the process of getting a new jail facility built for Lake County?
That's a good question. The current financial status that we're in now makes it extremely difficult, so it would have to be some other source of funding associated with it. But if we were to pursue that option, it needs to be an education process on why we need it. And you'd have to believe in why we need it. And when we looked at it in the past, we're still dealing with the same issues today. There's an overcrowding, not only of the inmates, but also of the staff that's there, as Kelly alluded to. 911 is in the basement. And actually, folks don't know this, but there's a tarp above the 911 offices, above the ceiling tiles to prevent any rain from coming down and ruining the computer system and that. Is that the kind of system that you want? That's the best place we have for it right now. So the remodels that have been done to that place, turning that place into Swiss cheese with all the holes that we've had to poke through it for wiring and plumbing, wasn't too long ago that we actually had a water main break in that cooling system that just about hit the 911 system. But luckily, it was in the Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Department that got the brunt of it. So again, these are just some of the things that we're dealing with already. And to have some sort of Achilles' heel in our system like this because of an old antiquated jail is one of the services that we try to provide for the county and then we can't meet those needs. So again, educating the public on what we're dealing with is key to funding a jail, funding our roads, providing the good services that are required of us.
Okay, thank you. Corey, this is yours to start off with. The legislature conducted a property tax study this summer and is doing nothing to alleviate the county's financial difficulties. What would you like legislators to know when bills are proposed?
Could you read that to me one more time?
Sure. The legislature conducted a property tax study this summer and is doing nothing to alleviate county's financial difficulties. What would you like legislators to know when bills are proposed?
Well, obviously, I would like to see these legislators take a firsthand look at our current budget and what we are dealing with here. But I would say that is no excuse for not getting anything done. I believe we need to take this problem upon ourselves in terms of a community and try to find solutions. When legislators think we don't need help and we realize we do, we are on our own. There's no ifs and buts about it. Like I said, I'm fully on my own as an independent businessman and in my mind, we do not fail. We have to figure it out. We have to figure it out. And unfortunately, it is myself that is making these decisions. For those decisions that need to be made like this, we have a community. We have a town. We have a rural area to help make these decisions. And I believe we can get these things done. I do not need a legislature to tell me that we don't have any money. I can see that for myself. But obviously, the legislator is not going to sit here and tell me how to get money. So that is something we need to take upon ourselves.
Aaron, over to you. The legislature conducted a property tax study this summer and is doing nothing to alleviate county's financial difficulties. What would you like legislators to know when bills are proposed?
I'd like them to show us how they would do it, just like Corey said. It's an education process as well. We're trying to do our best, working with a little bit of funds that are available to us and the state seems to have a surplus. Cities seem to be doing well. Cities seem to have a lot better opportunities when it comes to grants and other funding resources. So the counties are so limited on their options on producing revenue and to make the upgrades necessary. The property tax system that we deal with is an old antiquated system from the 1800s, trying to work in the 21st century. It needs to be revamped and there's a lot of changes that could happen with that to help make it a more fair tax across the board. As I alluded to earlier, the cities and the counties have huge discrepancies between amount of funding available to it. I think right now, South Dakota is looking at 16 counties that are looking at bankruptcy and they're borrowing money to make payroll. That's, I really, I've kind of had a loss for words at why our state legislatures are not looking more directly at this problem.
Kelly, over to you. The legislature conducted a property tax study this summer and is doing nothing to alleviate the county's financial difficulties. What would you like legislators to know when bills are proposed?
Well, first of all, we are not the only county in the state of South Dakota that is having troubles. As Aaron has alluded, there are other counties that are thinking about bankruptcy. We had out at the last South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Convention, we had a packed house on different counties that were thinking about going bankrupt. By the way, apparently, we can't go bankrupt. They say that you cannot go bankrupt. A county cannot go bankrupt, probably because you have so many assets that there's some way out of it. But anyway, cities are different than counties. Cities can start up a tax for different things. They can tax things. We cannot, a sales tax, excuse me, a sales tax. We cannot just dream up a sales tax. We can't do anything like that. And once again, when you do talk about having, well, we can do it without the legislature, you can't do it without the legislature. The legislature is there to make these laws and we have a stack of laws that we have to abide by. It's a big book. I got it about four years after I started. Oh my, there's a nice book we have explaining everything. But there is a book that is all on statutes. We run most everything off of state statutes and that's why we can't just go off and do our own thing. There's laws and regulations to everything, absolutely everything. The way we do our meetings, the way we do our budgets, the way we do everything. And like I said, there's the, we're mandated by the state to do these things by their laws. So it takes an act of Congress to get some of the things done, so.
Okay, next question. Aaron, you're first with this one. Would you be in favor of the legislature making county races nonpartisan?
I think in our situation, that there really doesn't need to be Republican, Democrat in our area. We deal with some pretty cut and dry issues that don't really require party favors or any party sides. So that's kind of an easy question, in my opinion.
Kelly, over to you. Would you be in favor of the legislature making county races nonpartisan?
We have to choose or we have to tell which sides that we are on or what party we are on just to get in the race. But after that, it's pretty, it doesn't come into play as much after we're in office.
Corey, over to you. Would you be in favor of the legislature making county races nonpartisan?
Oh, absolutely, 100%. I guess why I may have chose the Republican Party is simply maybe of the fact of what is going on that not necessarily doesn't pertain to our community. I have no, like I said, that's just happened to be the party that I had chose. But in terms of other things, I don't think we need to clarify, you know, our stance, our political stance in terms of where we are and just to serve the county on this. So I agree with the other two candidates 100%.
Okay, we are currently down to our last question unless we get some more through Facebook Live or somebody in the audience has some other questions. I believe we're at Kelly to start this one off. The bypass has become a highly traveled road over the last few years. It is important that road, that road is maintained and potentially improved. What steps would you take as a county commissioner to improve this road for the county? Don't fight over the, who gets to go first?
Every road in our county is important. The bypass, everyone uses the roads in our county, whether it be those passing through or living or working here. The bypass wasn't designed to be a municipal street. And more and more property is, has been annexed into the city and I believe it's time for the city to rethink whether they want the road or not. The city has already sought a tid for the road, but the county is not involved in that. The county has, however, reached out to Toby Morris through the, through an economic development But that will not be sufficient funds to redo that whole road. We no longer can do a gentleman's agreement on governmental things, governmental issues. The state highway was routed through town. The state allows over with permits to deviate off the state roads and can use the bypass. I guess a decision needs to be made. In the past, we joked about just saying, just give it to the city, give it to the city. So I guess that's to be determined.
Thank you. Over to Corey. The bypass has become a highly traveled road over the last few years. It is important that road is maintained and potentially improved. What steps would you take as a county commissioner to improve this road for the county?
Obviously, that bypass in the city of Madison is no joking matter. Visiting with several business owners that have addresses along that bypass, wanting them to post that road during certain months of the year. And the reason why we post roads is to maintain the integrity of the surface and maintain them roads so it doesn't cost us more later on. There's been certain business owners that have wanted to put a stop to their expansion. I won't name names, but making sure that that road is open year-round to carry heavy loads is crucial. It maintains a peace of mind of those business owners that their business can stay there and operate at 100%, 365 days out of the year. Like I said, that particular business owner was looking to stop his expansion in Madison, which creates jobs. People shop here. All that sort of infrastructure would have been moved to another location. Putting load limits on that road, such as even the hospital for oxygen tanks and certain things would be affected. Kohl's Petroleum, Recycle, Mustang Seeds, Gale, Madison Farmers Elevator, Dakota Ethanol, even though they are out of town, grain moving from west to east. I would assume most people would agree with me. We do not need double semis hauling 120,000 pound doubles driving through the middle of Madison. I think that's a safety issue. It's just kind of a common sense issue. That is something that we need to take seriously on that bypass. Moving it over to the city, I mean, that is perfectly fine as long as we can, you know, make sure it's maintained and make sure that highway stays open year-round so these businesses can continue to grow and continue to contribute to our community.
Aaron, finish up with you on this question. The bypass has become a highly traveled road over the last few years. It is important that road is maintained and potentially improved. What steps would you take as a county commissioner to improve this road for the county?
The bypass road is always a big issue for us. The lack of funding, again, I know I sound like beating a dead horse, but it's just a lack of funding issue more than anything. That bypass road, albeit our standards are low, it meets county standards. So it's going to be a county road as long as the county owns it. And unfortunately, that impacts, as Corey said, it impacts businesses along there. So all of our funding can't go to just one specific road. The most important road is the mile that's outside of your house. So again, it doesn't treat the other residents fair and equal. So I do my best to try to look at what happens with all the other people in the county. And if you put all the money into one bypass road, then you're really hurting yourself for outside traffic coming in, inside traffic going out as well. So as was hinted at earlier, the city looking at taking over the bypass road, if that's an avenue we want to go down, I think the city would do a wonderful job with that road. They can do curb and gutter along there with lighting and really make it a nice entrance into the southern part of Madison. And so there's a lot of potential there. And I think that with the bypass road being on there's a lot of potential there. And I think that with the bypass road being on the county's system, it's a hindrance to Madison. So it's something that we just can't fund. And we can focus on other areas. To make that road more of the city of Madison's would be a benefit to everybody.
Okay, we did get one more question through Facebook Live. This is concerning the intersection, the new intersection by Runnings off of Highway 34, and that becoming a potential dangerous, dangerous situation. What experience do you have working with the state on getting those issues fixed? And we'll start with Aaron and work down the line.
Well, the intersection there is off of a state road. So the state has their standards. And they do not want any more intersections than necessary that's out there. So we've had some developers come in and asking about adding approaches or, yeah, approaches off of the state highway. And if it's not there, if it's already not existing there, then you're not going to get anything there. So I guess, what was the rest of the question?
What experience do you have working with the state on getting that fixed?
Yeah. If there is a development that needs to come into the area, the developer works with the state to try to make that intersection, that existing intersection improved or not. The county doesn't have much to do with state roads.
Kelly, over to you. Same type of question. The new intersection by Runnings off of Highway 34, becoming a potential dangerous situation. What experience do you have working with the state on getting that fixed?
Once again, that is a state highway. We do not have anything to do with that state highway. It's their call on what they do. They do what they do. They are, like you said, they do watch how many intersections that they have. And, but it's a state deal and I guess I'd turn it over to the state. It's nothing that we can do.
Okay, Cory, anything else to add with that question?
Well, obviously, not having worked with state legislatures before, it's pretty easy for me to say that I don't know. Don't have the answers. Not everything's perfect. I guess if that person asking that question feels that that might be a dangerous intersection, I totally agree 100%. Anytime I might want to see danger, I feel the best way is just to possibly avoid it. There are other avenues to go to that business place. And I would suggest, you know, avoiding that. And then that basically avoids yourself putting yourself in danger and others as well, if you feel that is a problem. But I will agree with the other two up here and obviously take their word for it, that it is basically out of our control.
Okay, thank you. Kelly, we'll start with you with, take a couple minutes, final comments, and then we'll work our way down the line.
Once again, I'm Kelly Wolman. I'm running for my fourth term as your county commissioner. I have thoroughly enjoyed being your county commissioner. I would love to be voted on again. We've done some fabulous things throughout my 12 years that I've been on. And way too many to even list. We were, we have done a lot together. It's not a, it's not a me-type thing. We work together as a team. We're five commissioners that are doing our best for the county. We're also working with brilliant people that are staff, that we work with that know their stuff very well. Other elected officials, officials that work with us, can't say enough good things about them. I am fair. I work with compassion. I'm responsible. And I have a great respect for Lake County and the people that live here. Once again, I'm Kelly Wolman. I appreciate your vote on November 8. And thank you very much for having us here today.
Aaron, couple of minutes to wrap up things.
Yeah, I'm Aaron Johnson. I would appreciate your vote on November 8. But first and foremost, I want you to vote for the person, not the party. Learn about your candidates. Get involved with what's going on in your county. Listen in on our meetings and learn about the budgeting issues, the things that are going on with us. It's been a lot of fun being on the commission for the last six years. I was really naive coming in, kind of like parenthood. And so you just don't know what you're going to get involved in. And I enjoy being there, especially with Kelly and all the other commissioners, Adam and Deb and Dennis. So, but Lake County, you got some good people to vote for here as well. And Cory do a phenomenal job as well. So I'm glad to see other people get involved in this stuff. And I would encourage others to run for an office. It's a great experience. And put yourself out there and try it. You'd be surprised what you would learn. So other than that, again, don't forget to vote by November 8.
Cory, a couple minutes to close things up.
Well, I'd like to thank Eric and everybody that attended this meeting, whether it be in live person or Facebook. I think some great issues got addressed here and some things got explained. I guess the main thing that I can say is my motivation to run for county commission would be to bring my insights and inputs and opinions to certain things here. As you can tell, I don't have any notes. I don't have a notebook. Everything is straight from my heart, straight from feelings. That is how I generally operate. Do things on the fly, try to make the best decisions possible for everybody. Like I said, I would enjoy the opportunity to learn about things that are involved in this county that obviously I don't know. I think when you ask the question, what can I, what would you do on a certain individual topic, that is very hard to answer. There are four people that will also be seated, five people on this commission. We all have to agree. Like I said, the best thing I can do is give my opinion, my opportunity. Like I said, my biggest downfall is my experience. But I've never turned down the opportunity to learn anything. So I appreciate everything to be a part of this experience and hopefully it can continue. Thank you very much. And thank you, Eric, and thank you, DSU.
Okay, well, that ends our candidate forum this evening. Thank you again to our three candidates for wanting to serve our county. And I'll say that when we had our candidate forum in March, we had a three-year-old that fell asleep in the crowd. And if nothing else, I think everybody stayed awake tonight. So also, thank you to DSU and the Chambers Governmental Affairs Committee, along with the Chamber staff. Lastly, thank you to everybody who was on Facebook Live. I think we got up over 30 at one point watching on Facebook Live. And to those who submitted questions for tonight. If you have other questions, feel free to reach out to any of the candidates. And I encourage you to reach out to them directly. Remember, Election Day is November 8, so get out and vote. You can, early voting is going on now. And have a great rest of your evening.